Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of your Danville City Commission for April the 24th, 2017. Would somebody like to tell me where the year has gone? I mean, it's just flying by. I will call us to order, although we are one short due to Commissioner Atkins' sister-in-law's passing. So your thoughts and prayers for his family would be welcomed, I am sure. So we'll still call us to order. I will ask that our prayer this evening be led by Reverend Commissioner Cottle.
Thank you. Father of all, once again, we thank you for allowing us to gather here in complete freedom. We ask for your blessings on those who protect our freedoms overseas. We would ask that you be with those who find themselves grieving or otherwise in need of your grace and peace. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. And I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Wait a minute. Do we have somebody else here? Not here, okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kind of a dead crowd tonight. Mayor, you need to get them chest up.
Come on, y'all. You want to do a little stand-up? Is that what you want? You have the agenda before you. Do I have your approval to move forward? Or is there anything else you would like to add or subtract?
We did have an addition, didn't we? Okay.
Where would we like to put that? I tell you, let's put that here. Let's make that right after item four. Is that okay?
Sure. And this will be an addition to the agenda, Mayor? You may want to tell them.
Yeah, this will be just a simple banner request. And that'll be for, you know, Mother's Day weekend. It's for the Jenny Carroll 5K. We'll get into that in a minute. All right. We're at that section of our meeting where we have hear the public, where we invite you to address the commission on any subject that is on the agenda and the agenda only. We'll have a second opportunity after we get through our early business for hear the public on anything not on the agenda. Anybody? Seeing none, I'll move right along. You have before you commissioners minutes from the 10th, the 13th, and the 20th meetings. You may need some time to digest them. I'll entertain a motion at your convenience.
Do we do them in bulk?
Yes, you can.
Well, I would move for approval of the minutes of April 10th, April 13th, and April 20th as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Volunteer Week proclamation. Donna, do we have a framed one yet? Okay. This is for National Volunteer Week, and whereas National Volunteer Week is a time to honor that fundamentally American idea that people of different backgrounds, faiths, and points of view recognize that despite differences, we are bound together with a common destiny by virtue of being a local citizen of this great nation, and whereas the National Volunteer Week is a week that focuses national, state, and local attention on the vital role of citizens serving as volunteers and being an integral part of our civic leadership. And whereas National Volunteer Week is a time to renew that fundamentally American principle of citizen service and responsibility, and also a time to recognize the men, women, and children who put that principle into practice by assisting and strengthening their community through their service as citizens, volunteers, and whereas many citizens, volunteers, many citizens volunteer and serve on a wide variety of boards and committees for the city of Danville, such as beautification, architectural review, parking, streetscape, sister cities, housing authority, human rights, planning and zoning, parks and recreation, cemetery, economic development, airport board, ethics board, senior citizens, tourism, and others. And whereas in recognition thereof, Mayor G. Michael Peros and the Board of Commissioners of the city of Danville hereby declare the week of April 24th through 28th, 2017 as National Volunteer Week and urge all residents of Danville to please observe this week by volunteering in service projects throughout our community and city, and join with us during this week to recognize and thank our many citizen volunteers for their dedication and service to the city of Danville. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to accept that proclamation.
Motion's made.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Terry, thank you. Any discussion?
Thank you, volunteers.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
When does the luncheon?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday is the volunteer luncheon for the city.
Motion's made and carried. Any further discussions? I'd like to echo Commissioner Cottle. Thank you, volunteers. All in favor of proclamation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item three is the beautification committee appointment, which you have before you. And this is Claude Mullins to complete the term of Paula Berry, his representative. His term will expire June 30th, 2020.
I move for approval of that recommendation from the mayor to add Claude Mullins to the beautification committee for Paula Berry.
Is there anyone else? Is there a second to that?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question for vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item four will be the streetscape committee appointment that you have before you. I begrudgingly recommend Nick Wade be appointed to the streetscape committee to complete the term of Bethany Rogers. Nothing personal, Nick. His term will expire on September 1st, 2017. As you know, Nick was named Director of the Heart of Danville. Do I hear a motion?
I move to accept the appointment of Nick Wade to the streetscape committee.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
What's to discuss, huh, Nick?
Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries.
You're on it whether you want to be or not.
Item 4.5 is a banner request. Ms. Lisa Clark would like to request that a banner be placed at City Hall, starting April 26th through May 13th. This is for the Jenny Carroll 5K. The race is held on May 13th, starting in downtown Danville, and that is also Mother's Day weekend. Race begins at eight and proceeds to go, proceeds go to the Backpack Kids program. Lisa, you want to add anything to that?
Add something.
Okay.
Lisa, if you don't mind, I know you might be a little shy, but could you come up and tell us a little bit how the race? This is the biggest race in Boyle County and how it got started, I think it's worth mentioning.
Oh, thank you, Rick. It's actually Lori Ann Clark.
Yeah. My apologies to both.
That's okay. And about, this is our ninth race, and about 10 years ago, the directors lost a friend of ours unexpectedly. She was a young mother, and we wanted to do something in her memory to support her children and to have her legacy live on. And so we started the Jenny Carroll 5K and started it downtown. We really wanted to incorporate the beautiful town of Danville in our race. That was important to us because we have a lot of folks that participate that come from all over the place, so we wanted them to really appreciate downtown. And Jenny was a, Jenny Carroll was a teacher, and so we knew that kids were a big motivator for her, and so we chose the Backpack Kids, which is the program where backpacks are filled. Actually, it's kind of changed now, but in essence, boxes of food are taken to families that the schools have identified as being in need and possibly would not have enough food over the weekend. And so every Friday, they get delivered a box of food that would feed a family of four for the weekend. So that's all, 100% of the proceeds go to that. So we're just hoping to put the banner up to get some publicity out of it and show support from the city.
Lori, you may have said, how many participants? I know I helped to work the race last year, and I'm trying to, what would you say, 200, 250?
No, it's more like 350, 400. I mean, we've had up to 600 when, like the second year, I think it was, but it's averaged about 350, 400 every year.
Good event.
So we, I mean, we on average raise about $17,000 a year.
Wow.
Which ends up being, I think I did the math a couple of years ago, it's about 65% of their budget, the Backpack Kids budget, so.
That's great. I thank you, and I move to accept this banner request.
Second.
Thank you, Lori. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Again, thank you. We'll see you out there. Item five is Resolution 2017-04-24-01, and this is a hazardous, hazard mitigation plan, one we hope you never have to use, but Mr. Wilder, if you'll educate us, that'd be great.
What this is, in the year 2000, a proclamation was passed that each communities or each area do a hazard mitigation plan, and that's when it was started. And every five years, we have to update it. Chief Luke was on the committee, Chief Gray as well, among several other people. We completed five meetings with the Bluegrass Area Development Planners to recognize and take a look at all the mitigation problems we have in Boyle County and Danville, and there are several of them. I don't think I have to tell anybody in here that we do have some issues with hazards, and these are natural hazards. We've come to a conclusion, we've dealt with them, on how to mitigate them to the best of our ability. As far as I know, I don't know, do you all have a copy of what the Boyle County part is in your pocket? Was that given to them? Okay. So you can take a look at, a lot of good information in there, along with the plan itself. The entire plan is 623 pages long. It includes all of Bluegrass ads territory, which is 16 counties and some 48 municipalities that they have to deal with, Boyle County being a part of that. Questions?
Do I have a motion so we can ask questions?
Sure. I'll move we approve Resolution 2017-04-24-01.
Motion's made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sears. Mike, I'm looking in here, and it doesn't matter. May want to address the chief on this, too. If there were a chemical or tanker, oil tanker spill or fire out of our railroad, we got a plan in place for that?
We do. Chief Luke could attest to it, but it's a, it's a, it's a plan that we would have to identify specifically what, and a lot of things, a lot of variables come into that plan. It's like hazardous waste of any kind. This plan doesn't deal with that. It's mainly natural hazards.
Gotcha.
But yes, that's, to me, and we've discussed this on numerous occasions, probably the biggest threat to property and life that we have in this county is our railroads and what comes through here and what goes down the roads. We have a lot of stuff, a lot of stuff to deal with, and I go to every seminar and class that I can possibly go to on dealing with those things, and of course, I depend on a lot of other people besides myself to mitigate those issues. But I feel comfortable and confident that Danville and Boyle County is in good a shape as anybody to deal with these issues should something arise.
Any further questions?
Now, what do you suppose is our number one natural threat then? Is it flooding?
We identified a couple of things. You know, you take in and you go back past history, Commissioner Cottle, and look at what's happened. We've had, we've had tornadoes, we've had flooding. We have flooding probably towards the very top, because if we get a hard rain, as you very well know, we have flooding issues within this city and county that causes a lot of problems with property. Our winter storm threats are there always. Fortunately, we got by this past winter unbelievably well. That doesn't mean we won't next year, but those are the three: severe weather, flooding, winter weather, probably the top three. I don't know that you can distinguish one from the other. We just last week survived miraculously, as opposed to a lot of other places, for severe weather. We had, we were right on the gun for a while. We were right on the gun. In fact, when the National Weather Service meteorologist texted me at about 6:38 on that night and said, "You have rotation heading for the city of Danville," it was a little eerie. It really was. It was. Fortunately, it never developed, and it more or less went to the southwest, southeast, rather.
I was in a closet with four dogs and two cats.
I've heard some stories where a lot of people were asked.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate what you do.
Thank you, sir.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of motions, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item six is our code enforcement report. Ms. Lester?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
Good evening.
You have a four-year report showing that we had total activities of 88 inspections and complaints for the month. I'm struggling with how to best present these things to you, so I hope this is helpful. I have a lot of moving parts in my department and very hard-working staff keeping us, trying to keep us all on the same page here, so I'll entertain any questions you might have on anything that's presented there. I've also included a copy of the updated lien, Sue 419, and the condemned properties list that's up to date as well. We, we have hired a new parking officer who started last week, and his name is Roger Hartner. He's been very busy to date. He's issued 62 citations.
Two what?
He's issued 62 parking citations.
Okay.
So he's out there going strong.
And there's a boot on a car.
There is a boot on a car, yes.
That's right, by your place.
I saw that.
He's not messing around.
Yep, we are keeping busy. So grass and weed season starts May 1st, and we'll go through November, so we're fixing to get started there. We went live with our new software that you approved us purchasing last week, so that's slow-going, just figuring out how to get things in there little by little, but we're going there, and hopefully by next week, we will have the sign-up for the House Bill 422 notification. We'll go into place where we'll have that on our website where people can sign up to be notified anytime there's a final order on a violation. We have, we are just finishing up the, renewing all the alcohol licenses for the 50-plus licensees that we have, and Donna has just put out an advertisement for our new codes officer, and those applications will be accepted through May 5th. So we will hope to get that replaced, that person replaced as soon as possible and get training started. That's all I had, unless you had questions for me.
Any comments or questions?
As far as the report, as far as I'm concerned, this is, this is what I would want to see, what you concluded.
Doing great, doing great. Do you find that you're getting more public input as to violations? You getting calls in the office saying?
We get them all different ways now. We get them through Facebook, we get them, calls, we get face-to-face, through the website. So yes, more and more people are getting involved.
And that's a good thing.
That's a good thing. Thank you.
Good job. I want to make a note, too, there's some good things that your department's doing, but you have listed here, business license issued 24, you know, as we kind of had the CDP discussion, it's, we don't want to forget the little guys, too.
That's right.
Thank you, Bridget. Anything else on that? You know, I'll take a minute to thank staff and Bridget for really ramping this effort up. We talked about this a year and a half ago, and we made it a priority and a focus, and she's done a great job of bringing it where it is, and it can't do anything but produce more positive results. Item seven is city manager report. Ms. Scott?
Yes, sir. Tonight, it was already mentioned that Wednesday of this week, we will have our volunteer appreciation luncheon. This is, I believe, the fourth year in a row that we've recognized our more than 100 volunteer members on our various committees, and this year, we'll be at the Danville Country Club at noon to, again, thank them for their countless hours of saving, or of working and saving the city money in terms of advancing our various areas of concern of city operations. So that does reflect the spirit of volunteerism and that fundamental American principle that you talked about earlier in terms of civic engagement as a responsibility of being a citizen. So we look forward to that, our volunteers. The other thing that I would mention tonight, just for the audience at home and those who may not be in attendance, I know that each of the commissioners know that this Thursday, we do have a special call session at 5:30, April 27th, here at City Hall, to have a presentation made regarding the preliminary budget and to begin to discuss that and to ask questions if they occur to you at that time or to follow up with questions after that. This is our first sort of review of next year's work plan and revenues and expenses, and so we're working to complete that report. And about a month later, we'll come back with a final proposed budget for the city commission to consider at the end of May, but this Thursday is the product of a lot of work and effort of our commission, or rather, our department members, and the commission had ideas back in our retreat, too, that are reflected in this early draft, so we'll look forward to that presentation Thursday. I wanted to mention also, I believe it was last week or perhaps the week before, where we had a discussion in our Architectural Review, Heritage Review Board about the potential of receiving donations from the local Norfolk Southern Railroad in terms of some of their buildings. I did have a contact, or an official, that would reach out to me, and we're attempting to schedule a meeting to have those discussions. It was felt in that conversation with that individual that rather than sending additional letters, we just ought to get together and have a conversation regarding the potential for that, so that will be coming along in the near future. And tonight, we do have the request that we meet in executive session to discuss two matters. I had one, I think, on the earlier end of that being personnel recruitment. The other matter will be discussing matters in litigation. Both should be fairly brief conversations tonight, I believe. So that concludes my report.
See, you had to say, you had to jinx it by saying they would be brief. You not never said that way. Thanks for your report. Any questions, Ron?
Yeah, thank you. I know we're really busy with the budget and so forth, but just to make sure that we haven't lost sight of some things that I know citizens are concerned about, and this may defer to your staff if you wish, but how's, where's our progress on Whisser Plaza? And maybe Earl would like to comment on that a little bit. Or you can.
Yeah, sure. We have had extensive staff discussions. As you know, we're trying to jump several balls with limited staff in terms of not only our open staff, but contracted staff, and Earl could speak to the fact that they have begun work recently, and we have plans to complete that in the future, but I'll let Earl maybe respond to that.
Yeah, that's just it. We were trying to get subs freed up from other obligations to get here to do the work, and we hope that work occurs continuously now till it's done, which really, believe it or not, there really isn't that much time involved with finishing some of the work that's left. Believe it or not, the mason could be done tomorrow. Then the plumber, if we can get the plumber mobilized by the end of the week, maybe the first part of week, we'd be doing the landscaping, that kind of thing. So we'll just play it out in this week and try to continue to communicate with our subs and see if they can get motivated.
I appreciate that. It's a positive note. I mean, you kind of got stuck there through the winter, and I know people are wondering, so, and if I may, ask one more. We had a little bit of conversation about pedestrian and vehicle safety around some of the streets of our town. I know that, that you, Ron, have been working with Chief Gray on some of that. Is there anything to report on? Any studies or anything happening there in terms of that?
Well, Chief Gray certainly may wish to report on some enforcement efforts that the city has had in place, greater enforcement efforts over the past several weeks, and other comments, chief.
We're waiting on some monthly reports. We have been doing some extra patrol and some downtown traffic enforcement, and we'll run those numbers at the end of April and see how those numbers compare to March to see what kind of effect, but we've had officers come out and do some extra traffic enforcement in downtown various times.
And along those lines, if I might impose upon Earl to maybe comment some more on other things that are close in the works that might address public safety, if you would.
We can do that. We, we had a nice little memo typed. I was going to try to bring it up. I brought it to the last meeting, hoping it would come up then. To regather my thoughts, of course, there are several issues. There's pedestrian safety, traffic management, and then the police enforcement question that's, that's out there. I know that the police have stepped up and tried to accommodate the recommendations from, the requests from citizens, but also recommendations from the Transportation Cabinet in terms of how they can try to improve safety through enforcement. Transportation Cabinet is indicating they're dealing with some pedestrian issues down Fourth Street. We are following up with those folks. The intermediate pavement markings, there's been another idea that we actually hadn't heard, believe it or not, for some markings on, on Fourth Street. I haven't even had a chance to talk with the city manager about it. Came up Friday to, or actually, third, late Thursday to us. We'll follow up on that this week. Hopefully, maybe there's something there that with, with some directional pavement markings down, down Fourth Street, that, that may be a benefit. We're not sure. Beyond that, the biggest problem with downtown safety is the way you do have some one-way streets tied to streets that were originally designed to be two-way. For example, the building corner on Walnut and Fourth Street, the building is in conflict with the vehicle movement. There's, there's limited sight visibility if a car's going southbound on Fourth and a car's going westbound on Walnut, for example, there's a conflict there. Those things we can't overcome through our program. Those are just what they are. But some other things that the Transportation Cabinet is keen on is, is the traffic volume downtown. To reiterate, most folks don't realize that the southbound movement has to go through that Fourth Street, Main Street intersection. The westbound movement has to go through that same, same intersection because of Clark's Run as a creek, the viaduct as a, a bridge over the railroad track. So you do have a, a confluence of all traffic movement through that intersection. The Transportation Cabinet's effort so far has been focused on the reduction of that traffic flow through that intersection. They did a study beginning in 2011 that, that produced a report that is year 2014, I believe, the summer of 2014. Since that report has came out, we have tried to account for Since that report has came out, we have tried to account for the things that were identified in the report that would be beneficial, things like bump outs. The bump outs, we have developed the Streetscape grant application. We have not heard back from as of today for, to install the bump outs on Main Street, including Fourth Street and Third Street, which has the benefit of reducing pedestrian travel times across intersections as well as provide a little bit better channeling for vehicle traffic, which that will be a safety improvement when fully implemented. We do have some preliminary layouts for the intersection at Third Street, which is your most hazardous intersection. QK4 has done that for us. The, beyond that, in the report in 2014, some alternative transportation planning. We have actively done that through consulting work ourselves as the city, not me, but the city has contracted that out. We are set to present what we think our findings are to the Transportation Cabinet in May. And then, we will continue to work that effort also. So, there's a lot of moving parts. It is not a simple fix, contrary to what, it is oftentimes oversimplified. It is not a simplified solution. None of the problems are. But the problems are very simple, is that people are getting hit from time to time. And that is not, that is not what anyone wants. So, hopefully, that didn't ramble too much. Hopefully, that gave you a little bit of information.
Was your memo in some form that could be given to the commission?
Absolutely, yeah.
I think it would be important for everybody to know that the city, the staff, Earl, has been working together to address these problems for some time. It was refreshing for me to learn about any information we need to have and how it can support the public to understand that these problems have been well identified. And now, some solutions have been identified. We're just waiting on some funding issues to come through in a day. And we're waiting to add more communications with Department of Transportation. And I'm going to say that those are the appropriate levels of where the communication needs to occur between city staff and DOT staff. So, if you can share that information, that'd be great.
We will. And we wrote the memo to do that with. We hadn't distributed it yet. But the Transportation Cabinet does want to communicate with the city. That is, that has been confirmed before. It becomes more challenging for them when they hear from multiple sources. Correct?
There you go. I thank you all. I think it's good sometimes for us to talk about these things because people are scratching their heads when they see a pile of dirt at Whisger Plaza for too many months. And then, we see a traffic accident and wonder what's going on. Are we doing anything or not? So, thank you.
You asked a question, Earl, about circling back on the Whisger. What do we need to do to encourage them to complete their work?
The, the, part of the problem has been, just to be direct, is, for example, some of the vendors have been on the water plant project, partly because of the skill that they possess that is a little bit unique skill set. It's, they've been critical path items at the water plant, also with Whisger Park. So, unfortunately, some of the delay on Whisger Park is a byproduct of the delay at the water plant.
So, you've got two critical projects, one is Whisger Park, one is the water plant. Which one do you want to sell?
Right. And so, we've been, we've understood from the city manager, the timeframe, that at this point, he wanted to get it done. And we're going to make, try to make that happen, whether or not we have to go to different vendors and have a little bit more risk involved with performance, in our opinion. Then that's what we'll do. But we were trying to avoid that if we could. But we're prepared to do that.
Again, it would be important for everybody to know and folks to know.
One more thing on the downtown safety. Want to reiterate, all those roads that are in question are state roads. And so, there are limited, you know, we want to reiterate that every time because folks just say, "City, go out there and do this." We really can't do that, right? And including pavement markings. We don't have the ability to go out and just do pavement markings. Everything we do that is unique, that is not necessarily in the uniform manual on traffic control devices, they have to run up their chain of command, which takes time. And that has to be approved by the departmental staff at the Transportation Cabinet. All those things.
That would include if the city wanted to request a speed limit change on a certain place like Lexington Avenue. I know there's been some concern around Danville High School. Have to run the change, right?
Speed limit, they are, they're more flexible on a speed limit. But we do still yet run that up the chain of command with the Transportation Cabinet. We don't just do that in a box.
And while we're on the subject of chain of command, I assume the most efficient chain of command would be for some interested party or individual who has a concern, to contact city manager or you, share their concern, and then let you handle it from there. Would that be the appropriate chain of command?
Absolutely. That'd be great.
What happened? Saying none, we are in that wonderful American and Danville privilege. Call here's the public. And this is about anything that's not on the agenda.
I'm just here to, Jennifer Kirshman with the Convention Visitors Bureau and EDP. I'm here to give you some dates that you'll hopefully put on your calendar for me. This week, open to the public, the EDP, in partnership with the Community Arts Center, is hosting a nonprofit board member training. It starts at 8:30, light refreshments, lasts about two hours long. If you currently serve on a nonprofit board or would like to, it goes through everything, from your responsibility to your legal obligations. It's through the Kentucky Nonprofit Network. I know United Way has hosted them in the past, but we have room. So, if you'd like to come, just let me know. On the 9th of May, you're invited to Warrenwood, where Commissioner of Travel Kristen Branscombe will announce our economic impact tourism numbers, to be followed by Steve Chandler's final presentation for our branding project, which collaboration is slow but well worth it, I think, on this one. So, we'll wrap that up. And then, there's a lunch from Lucky Dog BBQ following. Warrenwood at 10 o'clock on May 9th through lunch. And then, please save the date also for June 1st, which is our 2/25 celebration at Constitution Square. We're working on programming. I think the bulk of the day and pomp and circumstance will happen between 11 and 12. So, more details on that to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Randy Graham. I want to be a little head of curve here on wishing to address the commission regarding the changes that'll be made here in the near future regarding our Economic Development Board. And we have Mr. Talenti in town. The current plans for a reorganized economic development structure calls for a 20-member board. Now, the city and county, who represents over 29,000 citizens, will be having representation of three each under the current plan. And the Boyle County Industrial Foundation, a private corporate entity who owns property and thus competes with other commercial private property owners and who only represents a few, is demanding to have six representations of the 20-member board, or they're going to take their ball and go home. La di da. I would say we call their bluff. They need us more than we need them. They know they're not going anywhere. They can't afford to. They're still going to benefit from having the property. Now, Mr. Talenti has suggested that representation on this board should be tied to only those who invest dollars. And I understand why he says that. But if we take that type of mentality, then we could have just one person write out the entire check and let him name the entire board himself. So, obviously, that shows the fallacy in that type of a thought process. Instead, we should consider a different way, in my opinion. The commission represents 16,000 citizens. Boyle County represents 13,000, 10,000 if you take away Junction City and Parable. But we also have another group out there, the other commercial property owners who have no representation. Their representation, they're a consideration without representation, actually, an economic consideration without representation. We had a lady that sit back here that owns property in this area. And she addresses the commission showing concern that she did not like the idea of having to go to a competitor, the Industrial Foundation, and talk to the head of that foundation to get approval and not knowing whether or not this person was going to be actually fairly representing her property. And I think she has a legitimate concern there. So, I think what we are supporting, and if we continue down this path, is basically crony capitalism. And these other people who have commercial property are not being able to be representative. So, here's a solution to be considered. The Industrial Foundation, give them three. Boyle County and the commission and Boyle Fiscal Court should get a minimum of three. And then, let those other three positions be taken by the other commercial property owners who do want to be, play a part of this game. I've talked with some of them. And let them come together and nominate their three. And that will be a true public-private partnership. And in closing, I just want to mention that money sometimes is not the problem. Sometimes, it's an ideal problem. And I just want to bring up something real quickly here that, you know, Mercer County, their industrial board, heads their industrial board there, receives a salary of $10,000. And in Lexington Herald paper today, this morning, there's an article about the Woodford, somebody on your head know what I'm talking about there. He gets paid $85,000. Brought in three industries just here talking in the past year. Now, looking at it that way, you know, right there, if we just consider that, we could save ourselves from $50,000 to $100,000 right off the bat when we hadn't even got started yet. So, I'm just thinking it's a consideration. But most importantly, we need to call the Industrial Foundation's bluff. We need to stand up fairly for the community as far as representation in the numbers. We don't need to have the tail wagging the dog anymore.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Anyone else? Saying none, we are in commissioners' comments, if there are any.
There always is, as long as I'm here, right?
That's okay.
So, Taste of Danville at Wilderness Trail Distillery has been moved to this Saturday, along with the Earth Day Bike Ride that I'm leading. And our city manager is going to be riding with us per challenge of the mayor. So, we hope to see you there, Mayor.
There it is, public. There it is. I offered to go pick him up today when we met. I thought, I'll come pick you up Saturday evening. Now, he said he could get there on his own.
So, this is a new event that's happening out at the distillery. And we're always doing something in Boyle County. And this is not a new event that's happening. And I don't know how many people are picking up on it. But Writers' Day Celebration, this is hosted by Penn Store, which actually is across the line in Casey County. But they do most of their activity here in Boyle County. So, and I think that's pretty neat. You know, there's some really skilled folks that live in this area. And for her to, for Jeannie to recognize that, I think, is really a pretty cool thing. So, look to her website for some information on that. But that's pretty good. And I'll finally just say, and here's a challenge for you runners that aren't quite up to the 5K yet, is we have a 2K run going on at our Jackson Park this Sunday afternoon at 3:00 that Montessori is holding.
Any other comments?
May the 5th, that's Friday night Derby Eve. The CASA fundraiser is that night. It's a great time for a great event. They always have a great band.
And there is a interesting fundraiser on Derby Morning. This fundraiser is for the Chamber of Commerce. There's a banner out front. It's kind of unique. It's a, it's a, it's a competition target shoot. So, a little different. And it promises to be interesting, I'm sure. Any other comments, questions, thoughts?
What's happening Derby Evening, CASA?
No, CASA's night before.
Oh, and wait in for, got it.
And then, night before? Yeah. All right. But then, we'll move right on into item eight, the bills. To hear motion to approve the payment of the bills.
I move for approval of payment of the bills in the amount of $113,119.22.
Motion is made by Commissioner Cottle, seconded by Commissioner Terry. Any further comments? Saying none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item nine is Resolution 2017-04-24-02. This is a contract agreement involving Carmen and Associates. And this is the wayfinding signage issue. Mr. Coffey, you give us more details, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. The resolution in front of you accepts the service agreement that is attached. It pays Carmen and Associates for the effort lump sum, $27,000 per their proposal to conduct the, coordinate the, and provide the wayfinding sign initiative plan and then conduct the program.
Any?
I'll move to approve Resolution Number 2017-04-24-02.
Thank you, Commissioner Sears. To hear second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle. We're in discussion, if there are any questions or comments.
Mr. Carmen still in Danville? Is his office still here?
No, it's in Lexington.
Okay.
Now, as far as, we have a, we have a limited number of signs. And this involves signs out on bypass, et cetera, correct?
All wayfinding pedestrian movements throughout the city.
And my understanding is we have a limited number of signs and that number is basically determined by DOT. Is that correct?
Not fully. The, what the DOT is suggesting is, is that we can do a better job with all of our wayfinding signs, that we have an unusually, unusually high number of them. And that they are suggesting that doing a, and a true comprehensive plan for our wayfinding will actually reduce sign clutter, but actually provide better direction to those folks coming in and out of town. So, they don't necessarily have a fixed number that they would approve, but they do think we can do a better job. And then, when you consider the various requests that were coming in simultaneously when we begin this process, then it does make sense because you have requests from the Arts District. You have the Industrial Foundation, the industrial folks who are developing wayfinding for their truck traffic. And so, it does need to be a coordinated effort. And again, with downtown safety program, the logical entity to coordinate that effort would be the city, which is why the city is doing this and coordinate the effort with consultant to aid in that process.
In Carmen's process, they're going to be open to some public input?
Absolutely, yes. We will meet with the folks that we had previously identified. We'll try to make a general public meeting known. We will coordinate with some of the branding effort that the CVB's done so that you get uniform signage. We don't want to reinvent the wheel as far as that goes. We think some of those efforts have been good and of quality, for sure. So, we, you know, it should be a community effort to accomplish as many goals and objectives as you can, yeah.
But then, that community effort, I guess, we need to be reminded that this is still going to be sort of refined by the DOT. It's, is that correct?
Ultimately, we will do a plan that is a, that will be a document that we will submit to the transportation, to the engineering department in the Lexington office. And they will approve. And hopefully, they will participate in the installation of some of the signage in that there are signage on right of way that they can spend money on, that they do maintain now. So, hopefully, it will become a joint effort with the cabinet. So, we're doing some of the legwork for them, in other words.
Sure. Yeah.
I guess the, I heard from a person who called is that they're worried that their business, which now has a sign, they lose their sign going forward in this process. I guess that is a possibility.
We can't say which business it is, wouldn't want to. We can't say that it will, we can't say that it won't. It's not something that we've even contemplated at this point. I think what our suggestion is, is we agree with some of the observation made by the Transportation Cabinet, in that we do have a lot of unique signs that don't look the same, that can contribute to confusion. It may be as simple as consolidating those onto one structure with a single color. We don't know. And I think so, to suggest anything or what would be signed is a little bit premature. I think you go through the correct wayfinding process to identify stakeholders, to identify those key interest areas, and then develop your signage really last. And there should be a hierarchy probably in terms of what goes where, and so, yeah, that's a process that you go through. And I think to suggest anything otherwise, saying my sign should stay, is a little bit premature and should occur through the process.
Thank you.
Anything, any further questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of motion of the resolution, sorry, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 10 is Resolution 2017-04-24-03. Again, Mr. Coffey, this is about the Enterprise Contract Agreement, and I understand we have a representative here.
We do. We have Mr. Eric Brady with Enterprise Fleet Management. So if you have something company specific, I'm sure he'd be willing to approach the microphone and give you that information. What I'd like to do is, before we get into the agreement, I'd like to bring your attention to the color sheets that Donna, I think, laid on your desk. There's three. The first is, says City of Danville Fleet Planning Analysis. This sheet summarizes the resultant pro forma based on staff's input into what vehicles is actually purchased. So initially, they did do a projection based on the vehicles we had. So you all authorized us to go forward with that. We took that and cleaned it up and dialed in individual vehicles to reflect accurately what the guys actually wanted. So that if, so in other words, if a guy was driving an F-150, then we really gave him the opportunity to say, what do you actually need? You know, this is what you've been stuck with, but what do you actually need, given our situation where we're at today? And so we've revised the fleet to reflect what the baseline needs are. Now, and honestly, we really didn't have to, we didn't feel like we really didn't have to pull those back. There's 11 by 17, a larger sheet, that looks like a fairly complicated spreadsheet. Those are the list of vehicles that we are asking to be in the first year's purchase, right? And so what you see is, is you have a recommended replacement year. All of those are listed in 2017, which is the year that we're going into, that will be bought, program year one. You have a new model, which is basically what the old new category column, which is the second column, will be replaced with the new model, right? And so then, then we have added some details, which is your fourth column. For example, you know, the utility bed and what's on the utility bed, so that you guys understand that that is the list of vehicles that we are suggesting, correct? So what that means financially to the city is, is on that first sheet, the Fleet Planning Analysis, the one I wanted to draw your attention to, what it boils down to is there's a yellow line at the top that says average. That summarizes our average yearly expense for purchase of vehicles. Then if you move on over to maintenance, which is $71,760, then it also includes our fuel cost, which comes into a total of $448,000 a year we spend on our fleet purchase and ownership costs, correct? So then if you move down into 2017, you'll see a change of numbers, so that your purchase price will move into a lease column, your maintenance cost goes down. The next column is a red number. That is what we're selling. That represents the value the vehicles would be selling, which offsets some of your lease costs in the first year. And it results into a lower fuel cost then, and a new fleet budget number for the first year, right, for the first program year. So what it boils down to, that process goes over a 10-year period, what this pro forma projects, so that when you get into the 10-year savings, the very bottom of that first table, what we hope and what we believe will be realized based on the numbers that Fleet One or that Enterprise has given us, is that you'll realize about an average sustainable savings of $48,000 a year through the leasing program over vehicle ownership, right? And that sustainable number, if you average that, that really occurs after the year 2022 on that sheet. You see where the red numbers go away. Once you get past the initial phase of trading into all your vehicles, and you get into long-term operations under this program, we believe, based on the analysis, that you'll end up at about $50,000 a year better off. So therefore, staff continues to recommend to pursue this as a viable alternative to ownership, and the various agreements you have in front of you accomplish that task. There's three agreements in front of you. The Master Equity Lease Agreement, which is, it's a four-page document, which is the lease of the vehicles. The next agreement is titled the Maintenance. It's a two-page agreement, says Maintenance Management and Fleet Rental Agreement. That is the agreement in which maintenance will occur, through which maintenance will occur with Fleet One. Then you have another one that just simply says Maintenance Agreement. That is a transition agreement that will finance the maintenance of the vehicles we own until they're sold in year 2021. So what the resolution does is it accepts the terms of these agreements and authorizes us to proceed with the implementation of this fleet management proposal as presented in front of you. The vehicles are identified. The city manager will approve that list of vehicles as the final specs are delivered to us. He'll sign off on that form, and then I think we'll be continuing to transition in that direction, so that we won't do vehicle purchases this year. This represents the purchases of all vehicles in the next fiscal year and then moving forward.
So they're also going to take on the maintenance of the cars that we currently own?
They will coordinate the maintenance. They don't do the maintenance. They will coordinate that, so that instead of our equipment manager slash mechanic maintaining records of those vehicles, Enterprise will maintain those records. We'll get emails from them if the vehicle's not had an oil change and things like that. They will aid in the maintenance of those vehicles, yes. And then again, they will coordinate that service work, so that hopefully we achieve lower price to maintain those. And I think their pro forma reflects that improved maintenance cost, partly because you're dealing with newer vehicles, too. Better fuel efficiency, for example, is the big cause for your fuel cost to go down. To be specific, the year we're in, the average years is $120,000, $121,000 a year in fuel cost. What they project is that will go down by the time all the vehicles are transitioned out of ownership and we get rid of all those old vehicles. We have new vehicles. That cost should be about $78,000. So you can see right off the bat, you're saving fuel in a big number. That's a big chunk of your savings.
Earl, you know, on the agreement we have with Train for our energy for our buildings, if they don't hit their numbers, they write us a check. We don't have any such guarantee with this particular, with this agreement.
No.
These are just, these are pro formas. This is what we think will happen, but there's no guarantee that.
Correct. And for them to guarantee these numbers, you would, these numbers would not be as high. They would have to have some way to give themselves some indemnification against a failure. And so what we've done is, we believe these numbers are easier to predict and also control. So I don't necessarily know that you need to pay them for that indemnification, right? So you're actually, you're going to save a little bit more money by going straight and doing it yourself, rather than worrying about getting that guarantee, because we believe this is sound. If you all don't, certainly we can provide you more information and try to work in that direction. We think it's sound. I think Michelle does. I think the other examples that they've given us reflect a soundness. And so we, you know, we have confidence in the numbers. The final detail of the number is always subject to how the vehicle is finally equipped. For example, if we get a utility bed, three-door cabinet versus five-door cabinet, there may be a minor cost variance in that over time, which is why the city manager is authorized to sign the final spec sheet. But this is where we go. And we know, we believe in the 2017 year, which is your biggest risk year, we have a lot of confidence, and we took a lot of time to make sure those vehicles were dialed in with where they're at. So we don't want any changes to those vehicles, for sure. We think that's exactly, the guys have had an opportunity to provide feedback on those, so we think we're good on those. I'm suggesting in year, you know, six, it may be a little different.
Right.
We can also opt out of this, whereas, you know, on the train, the train deal, you know, once the meter gets in the ground, we can't opt out of that.
Right. Well, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood.
And we can opt out of this. If after five years, we decide this lease program isn't working, or we're not saving what we think we're saving, we can always opt out at that point in time and do the buyouts.
Right. And there's nothing to prevent you in year two from buying three more vehicles, right? So you're not bound to anything necessarily with this, other than the lease that you currently have.
Thank you.
I think that was good for you to bring up, Commissioner Cottle. This almost exactly mirrors what we're doing with Hershaw Train in some regards, in terms of saving money over the long term. And I have a question. Just refresh my memory, we're going to sell off some of these, or Enterprise is going to sell the older vehicles. In terms of some of our agencies, let's say Parks and Rec, can we do something there and in kind to them?
One of the vehicles, in the year we're in, we will provide them a 2011 truck. That truck's not freed up yet. So as we get a new truck in to replace that, we'll replace that truck that has been tossed around.
And I just ask that, because I guess you're flexible with that then, Enterprise, to do that.
We've already covered that with it. That's the newest truck that is being traded in, so that then in year five, at some point in the future, as that truck wears out, we can discuss with the county how they want to replace that vehicle. This was an easy way to get them a vehicle without having to obligate capital funds of the, dedicated towards Parks improvements.
Okay.
To answer your other question, it doesn't have to be a one-to-one trade-in. It can be, we can trade in three, get four. It can be the other way around. We can trade in five and get three. It's whatever we actually need, so we're very flexible on what our needs are in the city at the time.
Yep. And that's another good point.
And I'm assuming legal counsel has reviewed contracts?
Yes, sir.
And we have 92 vehicles.
Yeah, page two gives you an outline of what those vehicles look like and the average age.
And the spreadsheet you gave us is just for 2017 only, correct?
Well, it's, if you go to this page, the one that says Fleet Profile.
Yeah, I'm referencing the other. The longer sheet's just 17.
The new one, those will be, the purchased vehicles will be 2017 vehicles.
Okay.
The sheet that you have, there's a chart at the bottom that represents, in each bar graph, those are the age of your vehicles. So what you see is, you have some front-loaded vehicles in years 13, 14, 15, and 16. Then you have a gap back to your older vehicles. You have several vehicles that are 20-plus years old. You have 90s vehicles, 2000s. So what you're doing is that the vehicles that are in that red block, we're taking those and replacing those with 2017 vehicles. And the quantity of those vehicles are in the two tables above, and we won't try to describe all that for you.
Some of you might recall a trip to the League Convention a number of years ago when that 21-and-a-half-year-old vehicle van.
Yes, I noticed we still have that.
We still have that.
That's a sweet ride right there.
Does it mean you'll be bidding on it?
I will be bidding on it. Isn't it a paint truck now or something? Don't the paint crew use it? So it's got a new paint job, too, right?
Every summer. Every summer it gets a new.
It's yellow, but it's okay.
Inside, too, yes. The inside, we touch the inside up and down.
Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion on this resolution?
I move to approve Resolution 2017-04-24-03.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. How about a second?
Second.
Commissioner Cottle. I think we've discussed all we need to discuss, unless there's more. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like contract. Item 11, oh, excuse me, the motion carries. Item 11 is Resolution 2017-04-24-04. This is a contract amendment. Again, Mr. Coffey, this is QK4.
That's correct. The Streetscape consultant that the Transportation Cabinet asked us to use was QK4 consultants. They did the Third Street set of plans. They have also done a set of plans completed, ready for bids from Fifth Street up to Fourth. That has been done for probably, what, two years now or three? Those have been complete. The Transportation Cabinet in Frankfurt has indicated that we can seek actively permission to bid that work now, which is a big step. And they'd given us $250,000 grant to help fund that, to help offset the expenses of that work. We had to necessarily, since the plans were complete, change those plans to make those consistent with the new requirements of the funding agencies. That means the front-end documents had to change, and also the lighting plan had to change. This agreement then compensates the consultant to do that extra work, also gives them some time to come down and meet with the Streetscape Committee again and go through the presentation of this project again, have the guys, the group, look at those plans to make sure we don't need any minor changes to those plans as we're, while we're actively seeking permission to go to bid. Also, we added a little bit more money in the construction administration phase of $2,500, you'll notice in the last paragraph. That's a couple more meetings with their staff down here. We felt like that, given the new requirements of the funding agencies, that would probably be wise to bump that on up a little bit. So staff recommends acceptance, unless you have any questions.
Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to accept Resolution number 2017-04-24-04.
Thanks, Commissioner Sears. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Terry, thank you. Any discussion?
Again, this is just, this is Streetscape and Third Street only?
This is for Main Street.
That's what I thought, okay.
From Fifth to Fourth.
Okay, I thought I saw something in here on Third, so I got a little confused.
This was the consultant on Third Street.
Got it.
Right. So they do, they do reference Third Street in some of their text, yes.
Any further questions? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 12 is Resolution 2017-04-24-05. This is about lab waste disposal agreement. Again, Mr. Coffey.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Again, the contract you have in front of you is with Stericycle. The Division of Water wants us to have an agreement on file to dispose of our waste as it is, not medical waste, but they want it disposed of as medical waste, meaning then that us telling them that we're doing everything correctly is not good enough. They want an agreement on file. This does that for them. So this agreement is established. It's only $300 a month and change, $336. But it does accomplish, we have that expense either way, but this puts it in text, so the Division of Water has something to hold when they show up to do our inspections.
Do I hear a motion?
So move to approve Resolution number 2017-04-24-05.
Thank you, Commissioner Sears. How about a second? Commissioner Cottle, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. I don't believe we have any items tonight for public safety or legal. Yes, we do have two legal items. Do I hear a motion that we move into executive session?
Sure. I move, I make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel matter pursuant to KRS 61.8101F.
Motion made by Commissioner Sears.
Excuse me, excuse me, we also have litigation matters to discuss, too. Pending and possible.
Okay. You want both of those in? And I also move that we go into executive session to discuss City versus Doe litigation pursuant to KRS 61.8101C. to discuss City versus Doe litigation pursuant to KRS 61.8101C.
If we can just refer, that's just a mock motion that you have before you, we'll just say that...
Oh, yeah, everybody's going to be asking, who is Doe? And what's this about?
Say that we'll go into executive session pursuant to 61.8101B to discuss possible litigation and pending litigation, for which the discussion of which may compromise litigation posture.
Was that your motion, Commissioner Sears?
It is, thank you.
That's what I heard.
That's what I heard.
Thank you for the correction.
Do I hear, do I hear a second to that motion?
Second.
I got two seconds, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are in executive session. Do I hear a motion, we move back into regular session?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, do we have...
Stanford asks us to accept the resignation of Lady White, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Next?
Also, we would ask that you hire Donnie Burke and Joshua Agent to position a fire primary group with usual protection.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Do we have any other business?
I have a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Due to the continued and unfortunate non-compliance with orders issued by the City of Danville and its code enforcement staff for the real property located at 222 West Main Street owned by Tim Montgomery, I move that we authorize the filing of a Declaration of Rights action in Boyle Circuit Court to confirm the city's right to demolish the structure at 222 West Main Street for public safety concerns, and that the law firm of Sturgill Turner be engaged to represent the city in said action.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor of Commissioner Terry's motion, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries, is there any other business to come before the commission tonight?
I would move that we stand adjourned.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.